I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Uh, roll call?
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen. Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson. Dokken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlee. Six present, three absent.
Uh, would you all please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, do we have any additions or subtractions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent items on the, uh...
So moved.
Second.
A motion is made and seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Uh, we'll move right into a scheduled hearing. Ordinance repealing the Wilmer Municipal Code regulating the alarm systems. Anyone to speak to that? I will open the hearing. Hearing none, I'll close the hearing. Uh, discussion. Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the, uh... Adopt, give it a number and publish it.
Second.
The motion has been made to, uh, uh, adopt the ordinance repealing the Wilmer Municipal Code, uh, eight two eighty-one and eight two eighty-two, regulating the alarm systems. Uh, that would be a resolution. Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. At this time, is anyone scheduled to speak at the open forum? Hearing none, we'll move into the Finance Committee report for February thirteenth, twenty twelve. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think you might have missed the Labor. I'm sorry, Labor Relations Committee report for, uh, thank you, Councilman Anderson. Labor Relations Committee report for February ninth, twenty twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number one on the agenda was, uh, we closed the meeting to discuss employee contract negotiation strategies with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities and the City of Wilmer. Motion was offered to close the meeting and discuss strategies, which passed. And at five fifty, we offered a motion to reopen the meeting with Councilman Reese, uh, seconding the motion which carried, and there being no further business. We adjourn. I move to file the minutes.
Second.
Any questions? A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance, uh, I'm sorry, of the Labor Relations Committee report for February ninth. All those in favor, whoops, uh, yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Now, the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, first item on our agenda was the Wilmer Candy Oi County Conduit financing request, and that was from, uh, Dominion Development Project. Uh, this is second, the third time we've reviewed and discussed an application for tax-exempt financing from Dominion, uh, for thirteen million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of tax-exempt bonds to finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of Eagle Ridge, Somerset, and Waters Edge Apartments. Ron Mail of Dominion, uh, provided a brief overview of the three complexes and the proposed plan for financing and rehabilitation. Part of this project would be to upgrade housing of low and moderate income families, and part would be for acquisition of the properties. Excuse me. The HRA staff and Dominion representatives were still working, uh, on an agreed amount of units that would qualify for the Section Eight voucher system. HRA staff would like to see approximately forty percent of the units qualify, and Dominion, uh, was indicating that their position was somewhere in the twenty-five percent range. The, uh, committee discussed the importance of the forty, forty percent requirement to preserve workforce housing stock in our community, since the project was not providing additional employment and/or large tax-based growth. Direction was given to the HRA staff and Dominion to continue to work on resolving any differences so that the project would be able to move forward in the process. The HRA Board has already approved this project and is required, uh, and it is required by federal law that the city approve the issuance of bonds by the HRA. It was noted that these conduit tax-exempt revenue bonds are secured by revenue from the project, and there is no obligation, uh, for the city or the HRA to repay the bonds. Further than that, uh, these bonds will not be considered a debt or indebtedness, uh, of the Wilmer HRA or the City of Wilmer, and will not affect general credit. Uh, we took this matter for information only. The second item is to do with custodian service. Uh, staff presented recommendation to award multiple contracts for custodial services to ServiceMaster, that's a local firm. Uh, the contracts will provide custodial services at city buildings, including the community and activity center, window cleaning at city buildings, and floor cleaning at the wastewater treatment facility, fire hall, fire department, and city hall. The recommendation was due to the vacancy of one full-time custodial position and per direction of the city council. The process used consisted of requesting proposals, uh, for various needs, including window cleaning, floor cleaning, and general custodial services at various city buildings. Staff then reviewed each proposal based on cost, experience, expertise, and references noted. Funding of these four contracts, uh, would be funds originally appropriated for custodial position at the community center and partial professional service appropriations from the fire department budget. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to award four con- four contracts to ServiceMaster and amend the budget accordingly.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to award the four contracts to ServiceMaster and to amend the budget accordingly. Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was the two thousand twelve street improvement preliminary budget and also our intent to reimburse. Staff presented a proposed preliminary budget for the two thousand twelve street improvement program, as was recommended by the City Public Works Safety Committee. Funding would come from a variety of sources, such as local option sales tax proceeds, the municipal utilities, county, state, and general obligation assessment bonds. As customary, due to the city incurring some eligible expenses prior to the sale of the bonds, the city would also have to take action to pass a resolution indicating its intent to reimburse for these costs, and that's what we do every year. Following discussion, I'll be introducing two resolutions. Uh, the first one is a resolution setting the two thousand twelve street improvement preliminary budget at two million seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
I hear a second. I have a motion and a second to introduce the resolution setting the two thousand twelve street improvement but preliminary budget at two million seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Discussion. Roll call?
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
And I would also introduce a resolution establishing procedures to comply with reimbursement bond regulations.
Second.
A motion has been made to introduce a second resolution establishing procedures to comply with the reimbursement bond regulations. Roll call? I'm sorry, Councilman Dokken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was listening to open mic, uh, today, and Mr. Olpins was there, and I think I heard him correctly, uh, that this is slightly more by a half a million dollars, and most of that, those dollars are going to be used for pothole repair, is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Dokken, what I stated this, this morning was that the half a million dollars war, was to cover cost of pothole repair that we did in two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
And then that will be included in this bond issue.
Very good. Thank you.
The discussion. Roll call?
Councilmember Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was a vehicle and equipment replacement schedule and policy. Uh, we've reviewed a recommendation to amend the equipment replacement schedule and adopt a revised, uh, vehicle and equipment policy. Staff explained that the Vehicle Equipment Committee, uh, was made up consisting of the Fire Chief, Police Chief, Finance Director, and Public Works Director, and that was formed to review the need of all city vehicles and to update the city's equipment replacement schedule and vehicle and equipment policy. The goal of the committee was to make an unbiased determination of all the needs of, of all the vehicles listed on the schedule and determine if the city's fleet was adequate, as far as the number of vehicles as well as type of equipment needed for each department's users. The committee came up with the following recommendations. Fifteen pieces of equipment will be eliminated and sold at the spring two thousand twelve auction. Reassign nine vehicles as general use vehicles, which can be checked out and used by any city employee for city business, and that the schedule be reviewed annually as part of the budgeting, budgeting process for the committee. The cost savings, uh, for equipment replacement in two thousand twelve totals two hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars, with an additional estimated savings of fourteen hundred dollars for insurance and licensing, licensing. Uh, before I introduce the resolution, this is really a significant accomplishment and, you know, hats off to that committee and the administrator for coming up with what seems to be a very, very good program. Uh, we talked about this for, for a while at the committee level, and I would introduce a resolution to adopt the vehicle equipment replacement schedule and policy as amended.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to adopt the vehicle equipment replacement schedule and policy as amended. I would like to just take this moment, if I may, to thank the committee, the city staff, and the city administrator for pointing out that fifteen vehicles are no longer needed by the, by the city. These vehicles will be sold at a public auction. When you figure the cost of the vehicle maintenance, the fuel, the insurance, the savings are huge. Thanks again for a job well done. Appreciate it. I believe we are well on our way to a more streamlined city government. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was a donation from, uh, Wilmer Disc Golfers. Staff informed us that the Wilmer Area Disc Golfers have donated five hundred and ninety dollars to the city for improvements to the disc golf facilities at Robins Island. The money would assist the city in placement of a second pin placement at each of the nine holes and possibly benches for players who are waiting. Uh, following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, to introduce a resolution accepting the donation of five hundred and ninety dollars, amend the budget accordingly, and send a letter of appreciation to the Wilmer Area Disc Golfers.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution accepting the donation of five hundred and ninety dollars, amend the budget accordingly, and send a letter of appreciation to the Wilmer Area Disc Golfers. Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was a donation to our fire department. Staff informed us that the, uh, Wilmer Fire Department has received a donation of a hundred and forty dollars from Pet Coats, Grooming, and Inn for the purchase of pet life kits. Uh, following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting the donation of a hundred and forty dollars, amend the budget accordingly, and send a letter of appreciation to Fancy Coats, Pet Grooming, and Inn.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution accepting the donation of a hundred and forty dollars, amend the budget accordingly, and send a letter of appreciation to Fancy Coats, Pet Grooming, and Inn. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just to explain maybe a little bit what this is, these are actually little masks that, that can be used if a pet is in a fire and suffers from smoke inhalation or something like that. So, will actually possibly be able to save some pets, and I know pets are a very important part of many families, so this is a, this is a big deal, and this is a good deal. And not only did we get the, uh, these oxygen masks, we also got training. So, our firefighters and EMTs are trained in the use of these masks, so this is one more reason it's good to be in Wilmer.
Councilman Reese, did you have something to add? No, I did not. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was Rice Hospital Advanced Refunding. Uh, staff distributed the final offering documents for the Rice Memorial Hospital Advanced GEO Revenue Bonds. The final closing on the advanced refunding is scheduled to take place on February twenty-eighth, with an estimated savings of slightly over seven point one million dollars. Final numbers will be presented to the committee and the, uh, Rice Hospital Board after that February twenty-eighth closing. Uh, that matter was for information only. The next item was tax-exempt government bond, uh, procedures and policy. Staff presented written procedures and policies to ensure that interest on all bonds issued by the city remain tax exempt. The city has been doing all actions required to maintain the tax exempt status of all interests, but we didn't have a formal written policy and procedures explaining the requirements. By adopting the policies, procedures and policies document as submitted, uh, the city would now have formal documentation to comply with Sections one oh three and one forty to one fifty of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution approving post issuance compliance procedure and policy for tax exempt government bonds.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution approving post issuance compliance procedure and policy for tax exempt government bonds. Roll call?
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that concluded the business of the, uh, committee. I would move to file the minutes unless there's some questions.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to, uh, approve the minutes of the Finance Committee. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move along to the, uh, Community Development Committee report for February sixteenth, the twenty twelve. Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee meeting met on February the sixteenth. Item number one was public comments, uh, and there were no public comments offered. Item number two, and all of our, uh, items will be for information only, and it's also fair to remind the public that on our city website, they may listen, uh, to audio recordings of, of the Community Development Committee meeting. Item number two was, uh, Green Step City, for information only. Andrew Bier, Bier presented additional information about the Green Step City program, and there is an attachment with that. Mr. Bier had been asked to return to the committee to continue discussion of the program. The information included an executive summary for the City of Wilmer's participation. The required best practices can be tailored to address specific city needs. Mr. Bier volunteered to be the local contact. He estimated that the process to set the program policies could be accomplished within approximately one year. It is anticipated that the only cost to the city would be that of staff time that is already budgeted. Program benefits to the city include recognition as a progressive city committed to energy efficiency and economic savings. Staff was asked to prepare a formal resolution to bring to the committee at their March first meeting. Local citizens' names will be provided to the, to Mary Anish for the necessary, uh, committee appointments, and, Mr. Mayor, I think that we should also encourage folks that are listening to this meeting also, that want to participate in this, that they should also contact you to be on this committee.
Thank you very much. Please do.
Okay. Any, uh, comments on item number two? Item number three, downtown plan progress, again for information only. Staff updated the committee on downtown planning efforts. It was noted that a meeting had been held earlier in the day with the Steering Committee to discuss five selected main topics for the plan. Each main topic has three to six plan elements that will be discussed in greater detail within the plan. Staff said that the Steering Committee would be meeting again within a month to review additional work prepared by staff, and that the consultant related to the individual elements responsible for accomplishing them and possible sources of funding. Any comments on that? Item number four, again missing, for information only. Staff presented updates on land release process. That would be at the old airport, John Suffer Club redevelopment, and EDA grant application for in, infrastructure at the expanded industrial park. Uh, Councilmember Ammon mentioned that local representatives were selected to make a presentation at the National Main Street Conference about the community-owned grocery store project. He was sug- suggesting that in situations where citizens bring positive recognition to the community, that the council consider covering some of the costs of their travel. The committee discussed the city policy, the issue of public purpose precedent, and lack of available finances. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask our city administrator if he sees a, uh, public purpose in this, uh, particular item.
Well, I think Councilmember Dokken and, and, uh, other members of the council and the mayor, I mean, I think you could determine how you wish to use, um, city, city funds of, of this nature. In the past, we have not supported this kind of travel with our budget. We typically provide professional development funds for city staff, and, and for this conference, city staff are not involved with that.
And so there is not a public purpose?
Well, I mean, I think, uh, from a, from this, from the city's standpoint, I guess I would say that the, there are no public employees involved in the, in the presentation, so it, so it wouldn't meet that criteria. Um, is there a, is there a value to the community, to Wilmer as a whole? Um, certainly there's a value to Wilmer as a whole and the community as a whole in promoting Wilmer, but, again, we have typically limited our travel funds to, um, city employees or members of the mayor or council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, there being, being no further business, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for February sixteenth, twenty twelve. Discussion. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is on item two, the Green Steps, uh, Cities program? I thought that was a citizen-based program, but you see the MPCA's name in there, so it's more or less a government program, or?
Um, I would ask, uh, Mr. Peterson, if possible, to respond to that.
Mary Anish, members of the council, uh, the community-owned grocery project is a citizen-driven project. It's coming out of the Design Center, and...
Bruce, it's on Green Steps.
Oh, the Green Step program, okay, I thought you were talking about the community and grocery scale. Green Step Cities program is driven by citizens, but there is a municipal component to it, and that cities have to file a resolution in order to participate in the prod, in the process. Once that's done, the citizens' community has indicated, or the citizens' group has indicated that they would lead the community effort to get it done. It will not be a staff-driven process, but it will have to come back through the city for approval of each of the milestones or best practices, and, um, will have to receive full council approval in order to do that.
Bruce, again, I think the question was, though, the connection with the MPCA, is it an MPCA program?
Not formally. They are the ones that manage it and keep track of what the city's accomplishments are. Uh, they maintain the database for that, but, um, there's very little contact with MPCA in that process.
Okay, so, you, I mean, I think it's a great program, but, what, do we get bonus points or something with MPCA then, or?
I don't know if you get any bonus points. There may be some state grant programs that would, uh, give points or priority to Green Step City designation.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, for the citizens, again, there is a very, uh, thorough attachment to this report on our website, so if citizens are interested, it's several pages, and Mr. Bier has done a good job of explaining, uh, the program.
It is on the website.
It's on the website.
Thank you very much. Uh, we had a motion and...
I did.
And a second? Councilman...
Just want to comment briefly on, on the, um, how this came about, since, uh, I brought it up to committee regarding the, uh, National Main Street Conference at Shirley, and, uh, talked about briefly, and it's, uh, it's always been my, my opinion that, that if people, citizens are going above and beyond the call to do it and, and promoting our city, that we should do something, something for them or to assist, and, um, I guess I'd just like to reassure the council that there, there is, uh, there is a positive to this, and, and it's not very often we get, uh, have the ability to be, to address a national conference with delegates who are volunteers. And I, I think that this would be a good discussion, a top, a topic to bring up, uh, at a retreat, or to get a consensus bill in on it, uh, a consensus on this idea, if that's something we should be appropriating funds for, and what, what repercussions could be, if it could be abused, or if we would be able to deal with them on a case-by-case basis. It's something to consider, even if other cities are doing something like this, but in this particular case, it was a large amount of money, I believe it was two thousand dollars. Uh, if there was money, uh, appropriated by the city, even partially, they would be able to then, uh, solicit other contributions to, uh, from other organizations to, uh, to help with the cost of, of the, of the project. I'm not going to push the issue, I just, I'd like to bring it up for discussion at the retreat, Mr. Mayor and Council, and, uh, get everybody's opinion on it, and if we can appropriate, appropriate money, doesn't say we have to use it, but if there are situations like, that come up, uh, like this in the future, then we should be able to recognize them and maybe move forward with it, uh, in a positive, uh, image of the city. Anyway, I just wanted to comment on that briefly, why it came about.
Is that something that we need to put on the agenda?
Um, I think we could discuss it, I think it might be more appropriate, um, to discuss it as part of the budgeting process for twenty thirteen, and if that would be satisfactory, Councilmember Ammon and the rest of the council, I think that's probably a more appropriate venue to have that discussion as we budget for twenty thirteen, and if there's a desire to have funds allocated such a way, and if we can do that, and again, if it's, um, possible to do that, um, and use public funds in that way, I think that's a discussion for the budget process, is probably the most appropriate, is my recommendation.
Yeah, if it follows a public purpose, I, I think it can be, it can be palatable, and, uh, would be at the discretion of the council, but, yeah, thank you very much, that would be great if we discussed it then.
So we can certainly do that as part of the twenty thirteen budgeting process?
Thank you.
Further discussion? I believe we have a motion. I believe we have a motion on the table to, uh, file the minutes of the Community Development. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the Proposal Two of the Redistricting Plan. Kevin, would you explain that to us, please?
Yes, Mary Annish, members of the council. As you are well aware, subsequent to the 2010 census, the city of Wilmer is required to redistribute its population into four wards as equally as practicable. Staff has done that. Uh, those two proposals were reviewed by the council at the last meeting, and you have a map in front of you that generally depicts what you have reviewed and accepted. I do like to note that pursuant to discussions with the county, it made life a little easier for their redistricting plans if we renamed the precinct of the non-contiguous parcels of the city, that being the new airport and the wastewater treatment plant, into a different ward that was originally assigned by the state of Minnesota at annexation. The state of Minnesota put in Ward 1 Precinct 1, which generally had no effect because there can be no populations living in those areas. They are the exact, uh, construction areas or fly zones of the airport, and same with the wastewater treatment plant. We decided to change those to Ward 2 because someday, as the city grows, they will be contiguous with Ward 2. Staff's recommendation tonight is to amend what you early approved from those two parcels, uh, from Ward 1 Precinct 1 to Ward 2 Precinct 4, and that'll allow the county commissioner districts to, uh, encompass that whole area and not have anything affect, uh, a precinct tying into Ward 1 Precinct 1 with that population count. We have shown earlier the populations of the four wards. They are very near the 4,903, uh, population for each ward, and what the city must conduct by April 2nd is a hearing on an ordinance describing the new wards. It is staff's recommendation tonight that you direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance. That in itself will take a couple of weeks because it is a verbal description, uh, down the roadways and the dividing census tracks and blocks, and then we'll be ready to put that in, uh, the proper timeframe to hold a hearing on March 19th, which is about a month away. That will meet the deadline that we are required to do by the April 2nd, uh, statutory deadline. So, that's the staff recommendation tonight, Mr. Mayor, that in compliance with Minnesota statute 204.8, 205.84, and our own municipal code, uh, 2 dash 148 to, or 146 rather, to 150, we have the city attorney draft that ordinance and then call the hearing for March 19th.
Come with the recommendation, Mr. Mayor. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to call for a March 19th, 2012, public hearing on the ordinance for, uh, redistricting of four wards. Discussion? Kevin, would you be kind enough to describe for the listening public the, uh, what, why the city has to make their redistricting first before the county can do theirs?
Certainly. Uh, first off, there is a pecking order. Uh, it's very astute that you called that. The state of Minnesota has concluded their task today, we understand. However, would never affect the city of Wilmer is, well, not never, we have not yet been divided by congressional districts, uh, as opposed to Class 1 cities of Minneapolis and Bloomington and all those, they have to wait for the state to, uh, divide their legislative areas. But they've concluded theirs, we must do ours by April 2nd with our division of our precincts. The county commissioners can re-divide their population as equally as possible. We have, uh, somewhere about 2.2 or 2.5 commissioners right inside the precincts of the city of Wilmer, and so they need to make their populations, uh, balanced by our division, and it comes first. So, we must have this concluded, although they already know what we're up to a little bit, but we must have this concluded by April 2nd, and I believe they have theirs, uh, the first meeting in May. And they all have to be conducted so that everybody knows where those area, the precincts are for, uh, running for these offices, and the filing periods begin May 22nd for two weeks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, the motion is, uh, to call for a March 19th, 2012, public hearing, uh, on the ordinance for redistricting of four wards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Kevin, would you like to explain to us the, uh, consideration of the Civic Center Arena on sale likely?
Mary Annish, members of the council, you have before you an application from the Civic Center who is renting space to the Wilmer Curling Club with their intentions of holding a three-day novice banchspiel. That will be on March 9, 10, and 11. The Curling Club plans to serve alcohol, and that requires the Civic Center Arena special event permit, and they will have to use an on-sale liquor licensee of the city of Wilmer, and they are using Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC. And the on-site employee there is Jennifer Chapin, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve this permit on a roll call vote for their banchspiel.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the permit, uh, three-day permit, uh, on the liquor license, uh, at the Civic Center. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Um, we'll get into the announcement of the council meeting dates. Councilman Reese.
Public Works, Public Safety will be meeting on the 28th, Tuesday the 28th, at 4:45.
Councilman Amen?
Uh, Labor this Thursday, February 23rd.
This Thursday?
Yes. 4:45, Conference Room 1.
Councilman Anderson?
Uh, Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 27th, at 4:45.
Councilman Dockin?
Uh, Community Development meets March 1st, 4:45.
Mr. Mayor? Community Ed meets, uh, Friday, this Friday, Washington School, uh, or Jefferson School at noon.
Friday, this Friday?
24th, yeah.
At Jefferson School.
Jefferson.
Under miscellaneous, Councilman Reese, you said you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I really didn't plan to do this, but as I was sitting here and thinking, I, I, I just wanted to thank the public, you know, and this goes beyond the city of Wilmer. Last Saturday, some within the community might be aware, some might not be, but, um, there was a event held at the Wilmer Middle School, uh, where food was packaged to be sent overseas. Um, the, the intent of, of the food is to, uh, send it to, uh, Kenya, to the Duda refugee camp. The Duda refugee camp, um, houses, it, it was built for 90,000 people, but it currently houses over half a million people that are escaping the conditions in Somalia. Many of the people that, um, escaped Somalia, they have to walk anywhere from eight to 14 days through very severe conditions, and many of them die along the way, children and adults. As I said, um, there's half a million there. There's a thousand to 1,500 people that, uh, arrive at that refugee camp every day. There's also a thousand to 1,500 that die every day in that camp because of the lack of food and lack of sanitary conditions, lack of water. So, um, I just, I, I'd just like to thank, uh, Wilmer, the extended community, because this, this endeavor wasn't done just by the city, uh, within the city of Wilmer. There were actually 29 churches and one school that participated in this, both in donations Most of the churches were from our immediate surrounding area as far as Lake Lilyland, Candy, Ohio, Spicer, Wilmer, Pennock, uh, Prinsburg area, but we even had some churches as far as, um, Appleton and a little town called Clements, which is south of Redwood Falls, that participated. There were approximately 1,300 volunteers. We were hoping for a thousand volunteers and got 1,300 volunteers. The target for raising donations was $43,000, and you know, when you go through this, you think, are we even going to reach the number of people we need to pull it off? Are we going to get the money? The Wilmer extended community stepped up to the plate. We had the 1,300 volunteers, and we far exceeded the $43,000 needed to supply this food. There was, um, over 800,000 meals that were packaged that day that's going overseas. And you know, the, the, um, citizens from our community, like I said, really stepped up to the plate, and it was a very, it, it, the, the volunteers that showed up were as diverse as our population is. And in fact, we had, we, Faith at Work had, um, volunteers that came to package food. And when I mentioned Duda Refugee Camp, and we had a video that, that Faith at Work ran before they packaged the food, showing them the conditions in Duda, and, uh, it really connected with the people that were working to the point that we had people in, we had, we had four shifts. I keep saying we, Faith at Work had four shifts, and in three of the shifts of 250-plus people, three of the shifts, there were people that had gone through the Duda Refugee Camp. Now, that really brings it home. Um, you know, that's people that were struggling, and they've come to this community for a better life. So, uh, you know, I, I, it's, it's just a thank you to our community, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to really thank the community, so thank you out there for, um, your generosity. Um, I've found our community, um, over the years to be a very caring and giving community, and, um, very proud of, of our community, how, um, the churches and how the entire community stepped up to the plate and, uh, volunteered and donated to this cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Excuse me. Uh, and I, I would personally like to commend you and, uh, for all your work that you do at Faith at Work and with the Feed the Children program. I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that there are 1,200 children per day that die on the way to the refugee camp. Is that, am I correct in that?
Yeah, a thousand to 1,500, yes.
But anyway, thank you again for everything that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also, uh, under miscellaneous, uh, I want to remind the, uh, city council that there will be, uh, a work session on March 9th. Save the date. More information to follow. Do you have anything to add into that?
Yeah, um, the council, we are planning a planning retreat for, um, and, uh, workshop for Friday, March 9th. Um, we are going to begin roughly at noon with a lunch, and then it'll be from 1 to 5. Um, we are using Dave Unmack of Springstead, um, to help facilitate, and he facilitated the work session last year, and we're kind of building along that lines, and the agenda and all of the detailed information about meeting location and such will be forthcoming for you. But do please save the date, and again, March 9th, 1 to 5, well, noon to 5.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
To move.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.